Thank you, Don. This is Peter Casper. I'd like to call the Town of Hebron's Board of Selectment regular meeting on May 2, 2024, to order at 7 o'clock if you can all join me to site the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Hey, that'll move it to Section 3. First of all, thank you for those that are attending in person and those that are welcome to those that are joining us virtually. Section 3, any agendas, additions or changes to the agenda. Mr. Tierney is joining us remotely, so I'll be calling on him from time to time throughout the meeting. Andy, anything you have in this area?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize. I'm not there in person. I have a little procedure that's preventing me from being there tonight. Otherwise, I would gladly join you. On the agenda, item 8B can be removed. That has been asked to be withdrawn.
So that's 8B withdrawn. Okay. Thank you very much. You good?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Okay. Section 4, public comment. This section of the agenda is reserved for persons in attendance who wish to briefly address the Board of Selectment. The Board requests that a person's comments be limited to a single period lasting three minutes or less. The Board respects the right of the public to provide comment. This time is not intended for open discussion or board response. Residents who wish to request a dialogue should make arrangements to do so through the Town Manager's office or you're welcome to do through the Chair, myself. Persons wishing to comment should simply type "comment" if you're remote and your name in the chat box, and Don will recognize you. Obviously, those that are in attendance can join us just by raising your hand. So I'll start with those in attendance. Is there anyone wishing to... Either one of you gentlemen, public comment? Yes, sir?
I'm with HHS.
You can comment if you want when it comes up in the agenda.
I didn't see that.
Yeah, you're on the agenda, so we'll be happy to recognize you at that time. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, any comments during the discussion section on the hearing?
Okay. Yes, sir. Yeah, Terry, we'll have you join us at that time as well, and you'll be recognized at that point to join us in the conversation. Thank you so much. Don, are those online? Anyone at this point?
There's some other opportunity at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you so much. That moves us to Section 5. Mr. Tierney?
Okay, under good to know, we have a recognition of the childhood apnea of speech proclamation. If one of the selectmen could read that, that would be great.
Okay, so that's 5A. I'll ask Tiffany Taylor if she could read that. I appreciate that.
Whereas, May 14, 2024, marks Childhood Aproxy of Speech Day, during which awareness will be raised throughout Hebron, Connecticut, about childhood apnea of speech, an extremely challenging speech disorder that affects 1 in 1,000 children. Whereas, childhood apnea of speech causes children to have significant difficulty learning to speak and is among the most severe speech deficits in children. Whereas, the act of learning to speak comes effortlessly to most children, those with a proxya require early, appropriate, and intensive speech therapy, often for many years to learn to speak. Whereas, without appropriate speech therapy intervention, children with a proxya will have diminished communication skills but are also placed at high risk for secondary impacts in reading, writing, spelling, and other school-related skills. Whereas, such primary and secondary impacts diminish future independence and employment opportunities and challenge the ability to become productive, contributing citizens if not resolved or improved. Whereas, public awareness about childhood apnea of speech in Hebron is essential for families of children with this neurological disorder and the professionals who support them to achieve the needed services for those learning to use their own voice. Whereas, our highest respect goes to these children as well as their families for their efforts, determination, and resilience in the face of such obstacles. And now, therefore, the Town of Hebron hereby designates May 14, 2024, as Aproxy Awareness Day. And citizens of Hebron and surrounds are encouraged to work within their communities to increase awareness and understanding of childhood apnea of speech. Sign the Board's line.
Thank you very much. Andy, we don't have to vote on that. It's a proclamation to we. Is it a proclamation or no?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, now just double checking. So thank you very much. Thank you for all that reading. I appreciate it. And that proclamation has been signed by all members of the Board of Selectment, so thank you for that. Andy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Next up is the Hebron Interfaith and Human Services. We had received an email a couple of weeks ago, and I asked them to come and speak on behalf of the food pantry needs to the Board of Selectment.
Can we have our guest here today? If you could just state your name, please, for the record and...
Hi, I'm Dwayne Runder. I'm the Vice Chair of HHS, the Food Pantry. Just some background about us. We've been around for about 38 years. This last year, we serviced 11,000 people with 274,000 pounds of food, which equates to about 228,000 meals. We also have a backpack program where we supply food for the weekend for 68 children in the elementary schools. For the weekend. We also have a pantry in both the middle school and in the high school that kids can go in and help themselves with food anytime, no questions asked. We just keep it filled up for them. It has things like mac and cheese and things that they can take home or snacks that they can eat at school, like vanilla bars, that type of thing. All pretty well nutritious type foods. We also have a summer program where we do a box of 20 breakfast, lunch, and dinners for the students. There's roughly 68 kids again, and then six meals for the family, complete meals for the family. For Thanksgiving, we hand out 256 turkey dinners, complete. Plus, we put out another $100 or 100 gift cards so they can purchase their own food. So 356 families get something for Thanksgiving. For the Christmas holiday, we hand out 150 presents to kids based on... We ask for what they want, like it's an angel tree. Plus, we have stuff that is given to us that we hand out. And then again, we also give out, I think it was $3,000 that the Hebron Lions gave us for gift certificates to Ted's, Saffin Shop, Walmart, and those types of places. We also do about $6,000 a year in fuel assistance and another $6,000 in mortgage and rent assistance. We get referrals from the school and from the town social worker for clothes for children, and we hand them that. So we're quite busy in the town. We are open three days a week, Tuesday and Thursday, from 6:00 to 9:00, or 9:00 to 6:00, I should say. And on Fridays, 12:00 to 6:00. Some of the surrounding towns around us, Colchester, is open one day a month from 11:00 to 3:00. I think it's Columbia and Bolton, appointment only. And there's another one, I think Coventry is open one day a month for four hours. So we're the only ones that really open a large time, a long time. We have about 965 clients, of which about 45% to 50% are from Hebron. If you do look at the national average, it's 12.2% of the population is in need of food assistance in Hebron. That basically is about 1,140 people, but we don't handle all those people. A lot of people don't know about us. And there is some pride that they go to other towns because they don't want to be seen by their neighbors and that type of thing. We get our food from Food Share, the majority of it. We're now getting anywhere from three to 6,000 pounds a week. A year and a half ago, we were getting nine to 12,000 pounds a week. Food Share doesn't have the food. We also do what we call the Red Barn on every other Tuesday, which is over here at corner of 66 and 85. We handle about 115 people each week. Last week, we had five items to hand out. We were traditionally about 12 to 13 items. So it's... The food is not there anymore. It used to be there before the pandemic, but stores have cut back on what they order, and they don't overorder. And so there is not food available. Once a month, we rent a truck and go up to Manchester to Midwest Food Services. We get about 20,000 pounds of food, but of that 20,000 pounds, about 60% to 70% of it is liquid. It's water, it's Gatorade, it's coffee drinks, that type of thing, and the rest is food. And it could be anything. They have, for example, the... One week we were there, they had mixed cereal, different kinds of cereal in boxes. And because we're a large organization, we get the maximum amount, so we got 27 cases of it. And as we were going through it, our warehouse guy says, hey, we got a whole pallet back here. You want the whole pallet? How about what you got? Because we have extra. I said, sure, just take it. Well, it turned out to be 60 cases of Fruit Loops. It took us a little while to get rid of them, but we finally did. They're good for the backpack program. I think they got sick of Fruit Loops after a while. We also... We get our money from FEMA, from grants. The Hebron Lions have been great. We get about $9,000 on their night of giving. Then we get another $3,000 for food assistance at the holiday time for gift cards and probably another $2,000 to $3,000 for fuel assistance or mortgage assistance. Those monies are restricted to Hebron only, and we can... We have the ability to restrict our food. We have... When you come in, you sign in, and you get a clipboard with a bunch of what's available to you. And we have a different one for Hebron, and we have a different one for the other clients. And so if we get something that's restricted, that we give it food for Hebron only, we can put it in the back and keep it separate, and they get different things when they go to the shopping. We've put in roughly called the 13 raised garden beds to do our own fruits and vegetables. We actually just put in six of them yesterday. That's food, so we can raise food for our clients, because we can't always get it from Food Share. They're getting lax, not lax, they're getting less and less and less, and so we have to go out and look for it. Since July of last year to for the last 10 months, we spent over $32,000 buying food, which we didn't have to do during the pandemic. And it's not available other than going to Costco or Walmart and then paying full price. Right now, last Tuesday, we had 12 items to give to anybody at the beginning of the day. By the end of the day, we have eight. They can have a choice of eight items. Our shelves are probably 50% empty right now, and some days it's even worse than that. And that's why I'm here tonight, to see if there's any money within your budget that you can give to us to supplement and get some more food into the pantry. It's... We have one paid employee, that's Krista, and the rest of... There's about 30 volunteers that help do the shopping. We find it's more advantageous for us to do the shopping rather than have them come into the store and walk around and pick through the stuff. So it's easier for us just to, if you have a can of beans, we'll go get you a can of beans. We're not worried about brands and stuff like that. So I guess that's, you know, the bottom line is, we need money. You know, I'm bending knee on here, asking. I've been with them for four years, and this is the worst I've seen it. And it's scary. I mean, you're almost embarrassed to have a client come in and try to get some food, and we don't have anything. So... Any questions or...
Is there any income verification for the people that come in or...
Years ago, we did that. We have now been told by Food Share, if we want their food, we can't ask questions. So we don't ask questions. We don't ask you, you know, we know, we ask you how many people in the family, and then you get food based on the number of families. If you got one or two, it gets this. If you're three to four, you get this. If you're five or more, you get this. You can have multiples of something. You get three boxes of cereal or two jars of peanut butter, that type of thing, or different soups or whatever we happen to have. So, yeah, we don't... We used to have verification, but we're not allowed to do that anymore. And that's from FEMA also. That's not just Food Share. Their rules are coming from FEMA. FEMA says, don't ask. And we don't, can't turn people away from other towns. And we know that some of them may shop other stores, but there's nothing we can do about it.
Another question. Have you approached to try to get the press to come in and do any kind of an article for the old River East or local papers or the current...
We did an article for River East about a year and a half ago. And I think we've been in the town... I don't know what we call it. I think that we were in there, there was some article in there about us a couple months ago. But there's still people in this town that don't know it exists.
Well, that's what I was saying, you know, getting the press involved to get, you know, your needs out there into the public eye.
We just had a... The Boy Scout did a fun drive or food drive last weekend. They brought in 3,000 pounds of food and $1,000. So we have some stuff there this week. You know, we're, I think we're up to about 15 or 16 items that we can hand out now. But we gave them a list of this is what we want, and that's what they were pushing out to people. We need, you know, beans, we need this, and we need that type of soups and that. So it's, like I said, it's scary. You know, I'm almost, I'm embarrassed to hand out food. You know, I do the Red Barn, you know, the Red Barn, you have eight items. And they're saying, where is it? They don't have it. Food Share doesn't have it, but we can't give it to you if we don't have it, so.
Just look at the food at the grocery shelves. The costs just keep escalating.
And they used to overorder before a pandemic, and so that's where that food came from. They would order, ah, give me 10 pallets of it. There used to be, and the other ones are starting to get old, and give them to Food Share. Now they order seven, and they run them short, so okay, sales over early. So.
I have a comment and two questions of the common, sort of like building on what Dan said about the cost of food is just constantly rising every year. And even middle-class families are feeling the pain, for sure. My first question is, have you ever reached out or partnered with the RAM system to see what I, from what I have heard and understand, there's an enormous amount of food waste in the cafeterias at the high school and middle school. So I don't know if they're literally like throwing food out, but remember what our mother and fathers used to say when we were kids, right?
Yes.
Throwing food away is it. And so I don't know if like...
I know, true. I know Krista works a lot with the schools because she used to be on the PTA or something like that, the PTA. So she knows all the teachers and that type of thing. So she worked with them a lot, so if there is something available, she would know about it. Yeah.
And then my second question is, you said that you needed money. Can you be a little bit more clear about dollars? What are you looking for?
I will stop. We'll take anything. I mean, we're... I hate to put out a number, because whatever we get, you know, at $32,000 over 10 months, just with the food that we haven't been buying, and we want to increase that, so you're looking at $3,000 a month plus... So if we want to get like a five-month jump on it, you know, and up it a little bit, you're looking at, you know, $25,000. I don't think that's, I don't know if you have that, but if you, whatever you can give us.
So the $3,000 a month is equaling that small amount of food that you're able to provide, less than a one a year or two ago? Because you probably had several funds at that point in time, and that's all dried up.
So we're trying to increase that. That's what, you know, we have the 3,000, but we want to go 5,000 to 6,000.
What would you say is like a healthy reserve as far as like funds to purchase food, like a six-month reserve or what are you looking?
Our reserve is probably nine to 10 months right now. Considering, you know, we have not rent, but we have payments on the building and stuff like that, which we have eight more years to go, less than eight years to go. We did buy a building next to where we used to be, and exactly, we're saving about $300, $400 a month, first of all, we were paying for rent. So having our own building. And renovation of that building estimates were 300,000 to 400,000. With volunteers, we did it for 60,000. So everybody came to tear it apart, but then to put it back together, there was three of us. So, and it's a beautiful building. If you ever get a chance, I know Dan was there, come on over and see us on the days that we're open. Spent years into that building. It was a year and a half, but it was well worth it.
Thank you very much, and thank you for what you're doing for our community. And we have addressed it in the past, who are for funds. And if the discussion tonight, ARPA's on the agenda, we'll bring that up, bring that part of the agenda, discuss whether or not it makes sense, because that's where the money would have to come from.
I appreciate you offering me the opportunity to come in here and talk to you today.
Thank you for all that you do for the people in need, really. Never be embarrassed about helping.
It's enjoyable. You get to see the people that you help. You know, when you see somebody come in and ask for food, and they leave with a tear in their eye because they were very, very hungry. They didn't know where their next meal was going to come from, so. All right.
Thank you very much. That'll move us, thank you. That'll move us to Section 6. Mr. Tierney, the Town Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hopefully, as everybody is well aware, the budget referendum is coming up on May 7. The signs have been put up. Hopefully, you can get the vote out and hopefully have a successful referendum. So we've been working on that, getting the flyer out, things of that nature on that issue. Item number two is sad news about motor vehicle accident that happened on Sunday where a young man lost his life. We had a request from some of the people on the street, residents there, for some immediate action, which we've have done. We've put out our additional speed signs, our message board out there. We've done some striping. We've put out additional signage. That tree is going to need to come down. That was struck. And we've put out different shifts of law enforcement to combat some speeding. Speeding is a problem all over the state of Connecticut, all over the state of, you know, many states, but also in our town of Hebron on many roads. It's unfortunate, and it's pretty hard to combat if people don't want to obey this, to be honest. But we had recently paved that road a year or so ago, and we did some traffic calming measures through Yukon, where we had put a solid weight strike down both edges of the road to narrow the travel portion. That's one of the known traffic calming methods that is pretty cheap and supposedly effective, but there's not much more I can say about that. It's just, it was tragic, and the fire department did a great job, the best they could do, with, you know, extinguishing it and dealing with the situation. We continue to work on ARPA funds with the department heads and the police department on their projects. That deadline is rapidly approaching. It's, we're into May. So I know at least Donna and I are full-court press. We're making some headway. I've got some good news a little bit later in this report to make the selectmen smile, hopefully. We've had some, we've had some very preliminary talks with Colebrook. They're possibly looking to expand with their operation, with some things that would mirror or enhance what they do now with additional construction. So Matt and I met with them. There's not much more I can bring to the board at this time, but just want to let you know, at least we're out there having conversations with different facets within town. I recently attended legal traffic authority class. It's now mandatory to be certified by the legislature last year passed in the state of Connecticut. So I at least meet that qualification, so we're legal. Quite a bit of information there, the two-day class. And more classes will also have to be attended to get my full certification. But as far as the state of Connecticut's concerned, I'm certified now to be an apposition for the Town of Hebron. So I apologize I missed the big event. It wasn't my intention, but the class was only offered once this year, and it was in South Windsor. So once again, I apologize for not being at the ribbon cutting for the senior center. We continue to negotiate the Parks and Recs Union. We had a meeting today. We set dates to hopefully move forward towards closing on that, and we also set new dates for the Parks and Recs Department to open up union negotiations in August. So we're busy doing that. Okay, so last but not least, the Wall Street sidewalks should be completed by the end of this week, after 20 long, grueling years of trying to get that done. We made some infield... I want to say decisions that is going to bring that in well under budget. So I don't want to give a number out today, but we should have a large amount of money coming back to ARPA. So that's the smile I'm hoping I would put on your face. We want to do the accounting. Once it's done, we had a couple of things we had to do in lieu of a wall, but which were far less expensive. So I don't want to prematurely put a number out there to not come to fruition, but I just, I think that's good news. It should, it should be a rather large sum. But the people that live on Ridge Road, it came into my office very ecstatically. She didn't even stop at the front desk. They just rounded the corner, kicking their heels, and they want to have a ribbon cutting on the 18th, and they would love to have the selectmen present for that. So May 18th, which is a Saturday proposing approximately, I'm not sure if it's 10 or 10:30, I'll send that out when we confirm that. But the River East is going to be there, and this has been requested by the residents of Ridge Road for all the years of their patience and waiting, and finally the wall coming to fruition. So they want to celebrate that. I think that's great. So that's all I had, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure if there's any questions left.
Board, any questions from the members of the board? Okay, thank you for that update and that, and that good news. And you did make me smile twice. So I don't know if that makes you feel any better, but thank you. So that moves us to Section 7 on the agenda. Mr. Tierney?
Yeah, number 7A is American Rescue Plan. Attached is the updated ARPA status reports. As I stated, we've met with the security people, actually Donna did while I was in school, and took them around to the different sites. So they're putting a proposal together for us. That's moving forward. So I'm not sure we have a lot to report other than we are out there getting our prices and trying to get these contracts signed, working with the police to get the tasers secured. We may be looking for just a little bit more money than what they originally planned because that quota a year or so old, originally for CIP, but now that we're going to move forward, we refresh it. It's a little bit more, so. But we'll bring that up later. I'm not sure, Donna, did you have anything that you wanted to add at this time?
The only thing is, I can just confirm that Craig and Matt are both working on getting more detailed information on their projects that we asked for. There's some people are not great at getting back with pricing. I know both Matt and Craig have been following up multiple times. So hopefully, at a very future meeting, I can't say the next meeting, but a future meeting will have better information.
Thank you very much. And so before we move on to, are you, are you done with your update there, Andy? Because I do want to ask the board for some comments on the ARPA fund before we move on. I don't want to interrupt you if you had more you wanted to cover on that.
I'm done.
Okay, all right. So this is a common topic, so let's, you know, let's talk about it. If there's something you want to add or concerns, I think we heard obviously today, I'd like to add that to our discussion. So why don't we start there? And we have, through ARPA Fund Head previously allotted $10,000 for the Hebron Interfaith Human Services Food Pantry Support. That $10,000 was accounted for, was approved, and ultimately spent. So the $10,000 did go to them as part of, I think, one of our early decisions that was made back in 2022. So the ten thousand dollars did go to them as part of, I think, one of our early decisions that was made back in twenty twenty-two.
So that's when it was in twenty?
I don't know when it was spent. It was approved and so I have twenty-two. It was expended. They didn't receive the money. I don't know what the outcome of it is. But I'm assuming it's long gone. And so we've heard money coming back potentially. Obviously, there's, there's a need in our community. So I personally would at least allow the concept that I would be willing to really bring some money forward, provide some assistance. I, but that's throwing out the concept, but I want, you know, comments from the board as to whether or not there's, what people feel about that.
I would, I would, I would consider maybe another ten at this time. You know, and then as we get towards the end of it, we can always see where balance, where balances are.
Other thoughts? I'm looking this way. So Keith and I'll go to the other side of the room.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I agree because, you know, a transfer like that between us and, and another entity that doesn't necessarily involve a specific quote, because we're talking about a nonprofit organization, they'll take whatever is written on the check. So I see that more as a December, like we've gotten to the end. And if there's not a quote in a contract, then the money has to be written out. So that's something that I see having a more definite number than, I know that's a little, that's probably not beneficial to him now. Because, you know, that's significantly down the road and honestly, even in between Thanksgiving and, and Christmas, which is a very rough time for them. You know, I'm not opposed to Dan's suggestion that we have a, a small amount of giving now with the expectation that if we have, you know, because again, the last thing I want is some money to go back to the feds. I mean, that is money that people have paid in taxes to the federal government that we have an opportunity to recover. I would prefer to see it spent in Hebron. But, you know, I don't want to give a ton of money now and then in December, because we have other stuff. You know, fall through or whatever, give, give money then. When I feel like right now, we should be focusing on getting like projects under contract, you know. But again, ten thousand dollars is not going to, I, I don't think going to derail any of our current projects. So I don't mind a small giving now with the idea that we could use this as a way to wrap up.
Okay, good thoughts.
Yeah, I agree. I'm not going to restate what's been said. I mean, I think that you know, having, having volunteered for agencies like that in my hometown of Rhode Island, it's an incredibly humbling experience to go in and ask for help. On, and I would be comfortable with ten thousand. I agree with Keith. I don't think it's going to break our budget right now, particularly if we are getting money back as the town manager just said. So that's actually the exciting news for some of our outstanding projects that will get a little bit more, you know, surplus coming in to configure that. So I would be comfortable with the ten grand now and then, you know, if we get down the line and there's money to expend, we can cross that bridge when we get there.
Good. Colonia?
I have two points. Number one, on the ARPA chart itself. I like what I'm seeing as far as updates go, but I would like to see more. I want to see a little bit more transparency. When there's a change in status or disposition, I want to see some dates. Because some, some of them, in my opinion, are still stale. So that we know that, that projects are moving forward. Just the more information, the better. And then secondly, on the food pantry donation request, I'm going to be audacious here. And I'm going to say that we are entering the month of June when the schools officially close. There are hundreds of children that are going to be not in school and not be able to access the cafeteria for breakfast or lunch all summer long, just three months. So the food need is going to be more acute in the summer months than it is right now. Because the kids, especially in the ramp system, have access to breakfast and lunch every day. I'm going to be, again, I'm going to be audacious. I'm going to ask the board to consider that we match their six month reserve of the three thousand a month and I'm going to put it out there for eighteen.
Okay, so you're putting out a number of eighteen. And we have so far three, at least, that have leaned towards our, our, according to ten suggestion. Okay, and my perspective on it is I, I see ARPA funds as specifically designated for the residents of Hebron. And so I would at least put out the concept of having any additional dollars be earmarked for Hebron families. Which I like to help all families, but these are Hebron dollars and we have Hebron families in need. And so I, I would suggest that at least we consider, even though it's a restricted gift, but very targeted to our Hebron families is, is would be my suggestion. Even though again, it's very, I don't want it to come across. I want to help everybody, but these are Hebron dollars that are, that should be designed for the Hebron residents.
Are you saying that you want to designate a percentage of the, of the funds that we give towards Hebron residents only? And then the other percentage to just general giving?
No, I'm suggesting that it's a, it's a restricted gift. So if we, if we, the entire amount is, is going to helping Hebron families. Now, if they came back, say in Keith's suggestion, which I think is a good one, where maybe funds do become available towards the end of the year. And it's a larger amount and they may say at that juncture, that may be more than we would need for Hebron or there's a different need. But I see these as ARPA funds as Hebron dollars and they should be going to helping Hebron families. Is, again, I'm not, it feels funny to say that, but I think our responsibility is that Hebron dollars go towards Hebron families. So I'm suggesting that. I actually, I appreciate your suggestion. I actually am fine with the ten thousand myself. Because I think what you're hearing is that we're open to a continued dialogue in this as these dollars continue to be more, better defined in terms of are they being spent or they're not being spent. It's funny how much is coming back from the sidewalk project. So I would agree with the ten thousand start with the idea that this is something that we can keep as an open item. That's my position on it.
Again, to reiterate, there's nothing saying that June, July, whatever, if they again, come up against a hardship wall that we can't allocate more, but this is a start. I, I do feel also, again, like you're saying with ARPA funds, this is for Hebron. There's nothing stopping other towns that go to, that these people come from, that they could not also do similar things with their ARPA funds. What they've done with their monies, I don't know. You know, but we need to look out for our citizens first before we start looking out for other towns' citizens. I don't want to make it sound cruel or cold, but you know, our responsibilities are to our taxpayers. So I, I, you know, I, I believe ten is a great place to start. And as I say, there's nothing saying that if, you know, the situation deteriorates with them and, and.
They're welcome to come back and talk to us.
And that's what I've suggested. If we're going to go with the ten thousand, I would like to have them report back to us in sixty days and let us know.
That's a good idea. That's a good idea. Okay, so I'll make, I'll make a motion that we allocate ten thousand dollars from ARPA funds to the Hebrew Interfaith Human Services Food Pantry Support. And that, that donation is noted as a restricted gift specific to Hebron families. And that in conjunction with that, we ask to be kept up to date by representatives from that organization. So we can continue to consider potential future gifts at, at a later date.
Yeah, invite them back for a meeting in July.
And we can invite them back for a meeting. Yeah, that's my motion. Could I have a second, please? Second from Dan. Hey, we've moved the questions since we've had ample discussion and go to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Or if you wish to abstain, please note that as well. Keith?
Keith, aye.
Thank you, Dan.
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you.
Tiffany Keely, aye.
Colonia?
Colia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Peter Casper, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, that'll move us. Look at that. Department of Public Works Action Committee up here.
Other ARPA.
Oh, you want to, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I, I know that the Hebrew Historic Properties Commission has got some things in the works that have been issued to Matt. And so those are things you were talking about, you know, projects that are stale. They are working diligently to try to get things and Matt's working right now with engineering services on a couple of other issues. One of my questions is, right now, there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there for a new cert vehicle. And I was just wondering, A, a hundred and fifteen, I'm sorry, a hundred and fifteen. I was just wondering where that stands, because it should be, you know, something like a used ambulance or, or something.
And there's no date there. So a cert vehicle, but for how long?
Yeah. So Andy, is there any update on that or?
Yes. So what happened was is he wanted to refurb the vehicle that he has. He had a company give him a quote. And we're setting it up to do that and the company went out of business. He went to another company to get a quote and a lot of the parts for that year, ambulance are no longer available. So now he had to switch gears and he's looking to possibly another company to enhance what he is presently driving or using for cert, but at the same time, he's in negotiations with the town of Andover. They're going to be getting rid of an ambulance, but the timing is questionable. We have to have a, you know, commitment and they haven't come up with exact price of what they want. So it's, sometimes it's hard to nail some of this stuff down and give a report if we don't have the facts. Perfect example is Craig's gone out several different contractors for concrete for the skateboard park. Not one person's gotten back to him. I know Matt's done a few things on, on his projects. We most recently have the, the shed that you're talking about Danny from Historic Properties in front of the town attorney for approval. So until we get some of that stuff, it's hard to report until we actually get the answers. But we're, we're, we're not trying to push back. We'll get you whatever we can as soon as we have it. That's the situation with that refurbishing of the cert vehicle to answer that question.
Wow, okay. Thank you. No questions on particular items?
Yeah, I have an inquiry about the Historical Society Cemetery. There hasn't been an update. It's going on one year now.
They have, they just recently told me this week that they have contracted with a company. They were in my office. Also given an update on the old town hall. Some of the windows have been taken out and being redone. But I have yet to see the contract with the company that's going to do the work in the cemetery. So as soon as I get that, I can present just something solid other than just some hearsay. But supposedly they've, they've contracted with a company that comes in and does work on cemeteries, gravestones and things of that nature. So we are reaching out to these people and trying to get them to, you know, get back to the same thing with the Green Committee. Emails about bike racks and finishing up. If the people aren't getting back to us, we're still trying to be, you know, cordial and polite. But I've, I've made several attempts. So just as frustrated as some of you people are.
Perfect. Other questions? Thank you. Okay, thank you very much for that update. I appreciate it. Okay, that will move us to seven B, which is the Department of Public Works Action Committee update. So I will take that. We had a lot of work spent, been done here. We have a communication update that we're targeting for next week. To follow from my comments from our last meeting in terms of some updates that came about from meeting with the architects, engineers, the, obviously the staff at the Public Works and, and the town manager. And we also are probably pretty close, Matt. Sorry, I mean, it's a little awkward because he's in the back of the room, but our town planner is here on getting that appraisal back from the next week. Ma, ma, okay. So the plan will be next week that we'll have an update that we'll be putting out on the website. I've sent some initial information over to the town manager's office to take a look at. And then based on Matt's update, hopefully we'll be able to incorporate that update into, into the website next week, work with Donna, obviously accordingly. So that's what we are at. Any questions? Andy, anything you want to add to that?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Tierney, for the seventh C.
Okay, on item seven C is the plan of conservation development endorsement attached as a memo from the town planner, Matthew Bordeaux, who's with us tonight. Regarding the plan of conservation development following this link to the draft plan. And then there's a proposed motion, but before we get into that and before I turn this over to Matt is this is a guide. It's not a Bible. And this was put together with Michael Larry as the consultant, along with the Planning and Zoning Commission. On multiple meetings, a lot of time and efforts going into this, they met with a lot of different entities, departments, commissions. But in no way is there anything binding that this stuff has to be done. It's a guide to try to guide you in the future to consider as you move forward, similar to the last one. So it's kind of hard to, it's a lot of information. It's, it's a lot, lot to take in. Not looking to change anybody's mind, but a lot of good work went into it. The final project is what it is. They're hoping that, you know, the board selectmen can possibly see it through. Danny had mentioned earlier, there's a statute that says that if it's not endorsed by the selectmen after a public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission can, you know, adopt it with a majority vote. So not trying to push any, anybody into conclusions or trying to make any changes. I just want to make sure that we recognize the hard work that was done with the consultant and the volunteers in the town of Hebron and then the rest of it is what it is. I'll turn it over to Matt to do his explanation. And then we can open discussion if you want, Mr. Chair.
That's fine. Obviously, whatever the appropriate juncture is, that's what Terry can jump into. But we'll start with Matt if you could.
Big spotlight though.
So, you know, I don't have too much to provide. So we have the draft. It's broken down into its various sections on the, on the website. It will include a foreword. And, you know, we'll, we'll draft, I think, some of the sentiment I feel like I've been gathering various members of the public is, there's a lot of detail. This being an update, so we're taking what's happened over the last ten years. Addressing all the accomplishments that are recognized from past action items. And those may be that weren't recognized, previous action items and, and but accomplishments nonetheless. And, and so basically what I'm getting at is, is it results in a, in a voluminous document. So there's a lot of material in there that we can use that actually helps the town, as detailed as it may sound, pursue opportunities, funding opportunities. If we can point to specifics in the plan and say, look, we've been thinking about this all along. This is a great opportunity to pursue a project along. You know, I guess I would really like to answer questions. I mean, I, I think you all know the intent of the plan, right? It's a vision document. It may have been used recently a little bit more as if it were regulation, but it is not that. It may help guide regulation, but any regulation is considered in its own, for its own merits. And there's a process for that, completely separate from, you know, how the plan is adapted. So I think, you know, at first I just want to, I want to say, you know, we really ought to acknowledge that we were talking hours into the thousands, that the planning and zoning commission are consulted, but also everyone else that's contributed. So multiple boards and commissions have participated in workshops, have provided feedback based on whatever interest area they have in the plan. And then there's been a number of the public that have come on, you know, their own time to provide their input as well. And the commission has been very considerate of that. We've tried to limit redundancy, but certainly it exists in the plan. Typically when there are themes that overlap. So, you know, if, if, because it's as luminous as it is, there is particular interest in a certain section, you may not recognize that, that particular item or concern is addressed elsewhere in the plan. So I don't know if there's a, too much more I can say about it. The planning and zoning commission will hold a public hearing on May twenty-eighth to consider any outstanding comments without a special meeting just the other night. Worked through a series of outstanding comments from multiple public members. We tried to summarize those or, you know, the chairman actually did a great job summarizing. And the commission was pretty liberal with how they ought to, or how pretty liberal with how they ought to, or how they consider new additions. Because, um, for the most part, we shouldn't really be thinking about this as like blocking any kind of decision making, but it's, it is an opportunity, uh, for us to consider new paths. But ultimately this, this is an update from plan that's been a pretty good guiding document for a long time. I think for, you know, as an example, that, you know, it's also, it's also a working document and it can be, can be, uh, amended whenever, whenever the community feels appropriate, it's appropriate. So, um, you know, we adopted what, two years ago now that, uh, mandated affordable housing plan that the town decided was more appropriately termed the Housing Choices Plan, because we know that we have needs across the board, not just in the area of affordable house. And that, those, 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 uh, strategies that were included in that plan now become part of the town's plan going forward. So there's overlapping themes. There's, again, there's redundancy. Uh, there's also cross-reference. Um, so, and that happens with a lot of the different plans that the town has developed over the years. So, uh, you know, again, I think I want to emphasize working document. Yep. It, it is a vision for the 10 years, but plans change. So, uh, with it, uh, you know, to have a flexible plan is important as well. So if you have any questions or anything like that, uh, happy to.
We, we do, uh, I'm sure, um, but, um, no, I know there's questions, but Terry, you, you would ask to speak. Would you think it's most appropriate for you to add your comments so the board can hear those prior to us? Uh, you know, sending questions or do you want us to talk to Matt and then provide your comments?
One thing from Matt, what type of funding is tied to that? Is it grants that are dependent on?
Yeah. So state discretionary funding. So that would include, for example, we've been very successful with our small town economic, economic assistance program grants, um, probably includes, uh, you know, some of our open space funding, or some of our resilience funding, um, a resilient C funding, um, but there's probably many that I'm not thinking of that are on that list. So yeah, so the priority really should be to have the working document, uh, an updated plan. We don't want to miss opportunities. We know how quickly those, those opportunities come and go. Uh, so certainly is a priority, and that's kind of why I was emphasizing, you know, the fact that this is, this is a working document and we can, you know, amend it as appropriate when we see fit, you know, if there's more time that the community wants to spend looking at it, well then, it'll be it. But it has been three years and we have solicited, uh, every available entity, uh, many of whom provided a great deal of content. So, um, a lot of that has been incorporated. But I don't know if that's.
And we're talking significant hours, right?
Oh, I mean, I, you know, I've been here for two years, but I've, I've, uh, administered three steep grants at each about a half a million dollars each. So, I mean, those are meaningful projects that we, that we take an opportunity. We, we frequently leverage, uh, open space funding. Um, I think they're, not that we'll at the staff doesn't time to do it, but, uh, there are other opportunities for, uh, climate adaptation and resiliency. Those are big. You know, I don't know how exactly, uh, some of the success we've had with, uh, the Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant is huge. Uh, there are small city grants. Um, I'm not exactly sure which one of those are impacted by, are considered discretionary funding, um, but some of them probably are.
And if we, uh, do not have a plan, are these funds in jeopardy?
Yeah, I think that state statute now says explicitly, once upon a time you could write a letter and make an excuse. But I think that state statutes have been amended to stipulate that, that a plan must be adopted, to your plan must be adopted or renewed, however necessary.
So if I, if I could take a minute, you might want to sit down.
Sure.
A long time since I've done this. I don't know. Sorry. Um, I just want to say, in the last week's meeting with the charity committee, that was so enjoyable. It was good seeing you having fun in the audience. I hadn't seen that before. It was just good to be there. Appreciate it. I appreciate that meeting. The other day I was walking away, walking behind the house, doing some chores and that trip. And I stumbled, and I stumbled, and I stumbled, and I didn't. And I knew that there was a fall ahead of me, so I had to think about, you know. I never thought I would be here right now. I've worked on this plan as Matt noted, as many, many hours. And I was only on forty percent of it. This is years and a half worth of work, getting input from the community, putting it together, getting five commissioners or seven commissioners, plus or minus, to agree on it. Quite a bit of discussion, debate, argument maybe even sometimes over the word and consensus. When I heard that there were serious concerns from the selectmen, uh, that was about a month and a half, well, what are the meanings? Just four, and I was thinking, boy, I would have liked to have heard this a while back. It would have helped in the discussions. But it didn't happen. And now we're set with the best product, a lot of work, earnest people, people in the community, commissioners, staff. And we're coming up on a crunch time. If I thought this plan wasn't going to fail, I wouldn't be here, because I wouldn't be here talking, still working on the debates. Knowing the necessity of this plan, I'm here to urge the board of selectmen to give their endorsement. That's the first. What I was thinking about is if you do not give your endorsement, which is your prerogative, and that's why you're here to make that decision. I had to figure out how could I endorse? And part of the debate the other day was insert some language in an attempt to ensure that we never get to the point where we were last year. Where this plan, in my opinion, was weaponized for political purposes and did great harm to this town. And one of the things that was always, um, Matt was, Mike, and the rest of the commissioners were teaching me about this whole process. They kept emphasizing this is not law. This is a group of ideas and go forward. How can we strategize? What do we want in the future? But it is not law. And so I requested when the commission agreed that in the preamble or the preface, I don't remember what it called, that we insert a number of words, but the most important to me is it is important to note that the P O C D is not a regulation or a mandate, but it is an important advisory document. With that in the plan, thirty-three percent of the plan that I understand, the twenty-two percent that I agree with, the eleven percent I don't agree with, that is thirty-three percent that I understand. I can back it because I know there's a lot of people that are working for this town to go forward, make it work. That's the first thing I would like to do. Second thing is, as a group, I would like to see what your opinion is. And I'm thinking, well, could we put a preface from the board of selectmen into our plan? I'm not sure that's legal thing. I haven't researched it. But technically from our website, a philosophy document as to what the board of selectmen at the onset of this 10-year plan, what their thoughts are, what use. I know, and if I were to do that, I'd say it's important for us to be flexible because there's going to be challenges in front of us. We're going to be like me fall the other day, where I'm stumbling and I'm stumbling, and I know there's stuff following me. How am I going to react? And I'm asking us to approve the plan, stumble as we will, work hard, which I witnessed in charity committee last week. I just had so much fun that day. There's a lot of work happening from people working together, bringing this town forward into the future. And that's what we're going to be. As the reason I asked Matt about the funding, if we don't renew this plan, we're going to be losing the funds that we are planning. We'll be screaming. That'll be part of this family. If you don't endorse, that's a statement. And that's your statement to me. The board of commissioners, uh, commissioners will then have to decide whether to endorse or not. But then the big one is it needs to go out to the community. The community needs to vote. I was told a long time ago that some things are really hard to get past for reasons. The board's real almost impossible to pass if we're not working together. So appreciate the time and appreciate you letting me try out this new format and giving it in. It was fun too.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. So I'm going to, I'm going to read the proposed motion. So the motion's out there, and then we'll open it up for board uh, discussion and questions and whatnot, just so the motion is out there. The Hebron Board of Selectmen in recognition of the countless hours and numerous meetings over three years that the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff has devoted to the update of the Plan of Conservation and Development, and in recognition that an updated plan of conservation and development is essential to successfully apply for many state discretionary grants, which Hebron has greatly benefited from in the past. And in accordance with section eight dash twenty-three of the Connecticut General Statute, hereby endorse the draft 2024 Plan of Conservation and Development. That is the motion. May I have a second, please?
I'll stop there.
Second, Tiffany. Thank you, Tiffany. And now let's open it up for discussion and questions. And I started to my right, so I'll start to my left all this time. Um, so Claudia, questions, thoughts, comments, and you let this start?
Just generally, of course, I mean, I support the plan. I think that we, the town, it's remarkable what I've seen, particularly in the last couple of years, the shift in a good way, um, towards recognizing like the possibilities and the opportunities that we have in town, particularly in the business district. It's so far, it's moving on beautifully. It's being done right. And I think we got something here. We got this, there's something very special about Hebron. Um, it's, again, I love the way we have going forward, honoring the past in our heritage, in our, you know, our beautiful town centers like Newland Village, continuing on that, on that path, um, and then continuing to look for opportunities to expand the business district because we need those business tax revenues like yesterday. So I, of course, I support this. I'm very excited to see what happens and I'm sure I'll be there for you then.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start by thanking all of you for, for pulling this plan together. It is an enormous document, um, with a lot of detail and a lot of attention paid to providing an advisory document for the town's future. Um, I think my initial hesitancy was looking at some of our statistics, frankly, with open space. Um, it, it is concerning that we know in this plan that the future open space map shows a total of forty-one percent of our land tied up in open space, and that's not a percentage I personally could support as a select woman, um, just being, speaking plainly. But I do appreciate the effort I, both of you made here tonight to note that this is an advisory document, that there can be a preamble put forward that this is not binding statute. It just provides us an avenue to have a guiding document. It gives us the flexibility and the ability to apply for those crucial steep grants. I know how important those are to small towns. As a former news reporter, a lot of towns, especially out in Wyndham County where I worked, were fully reliant on getting that kind of money. And so what I don't want is perfect to be the enemy of good here. Um, and so I would move forward so long as that preamble is very explicitly stated that this is an evolving working document that is not intended to be binding in any way, um, and that it's intended to be flexible. Um, the only other thing I'll know is there's a comment in the chat regarding, um, an update for affordable housing by 2027 from fifty to seventy-five in the 2022, 2027. Matt's smiling, so he must know what I'm talking about. All right. So that comment's in there for you. And so I would, I would, um, endorse the draft with that, with that in mind. Thank you.
You want to comment on that, or you, is there anything?
I know exactly where the comment came from and appreciate it.
No, it's fine. Mr. Larson?
Oh, yeah.
Um, I sent a letter with a, a number of, of questions and issues just about a month ago. Uh, and as I say, what my letter says, I reviewed the document and generally found it acceptable. That said, there are many instances where I thought that they have quote unquote overstepped the authority. Section two B policies, item, uh, four wells. Do we own them or does the water company, what about potential wells? What about the development? And those, uh, around them or who owns them after development? Now, I did receive a little bit of information, and it talks about maintaining town ownership of any potential drinking water supplies within town-owned land. The town should retain ownership of the water supply, even if the town authorizes another entity to extract such supply. Uh, so that was on the wells. Um, it also talks about encouraging cooperative youth efforts amongst the Connecticut Water Company, the State of Connecticut, and local land use agencies to protect future water supply recharge areas. Uh, so I don't know if that actually made it into the document or not. Um, I have not received outside of this information that talked about the, um, the, uh, regulatory authority that really, whether we endorse the plan or not, is not necessary for planning and zoning to pass it. So is that correct?
You repeat the question, or you're saying?
Well, a couple of things. About saying if we don't pass this, the planning and zoning still has the authority statutorily to pass this in spite of our actions.
So just to, just to be clear, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission wants to consider it with comments. So if there are specific comments, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission can certainly consider them, and if the Planning and Zoning Commission feels that it's appropriate for them to be incorporated, we can do that. Still a public hearing, still receive public comments if that's.
Have they received my letter of April fourth?
So they did receive your letter, which I, I believe, I think they, we, we, we discussed the other night, and I think was substantially questions, not necessarily recommendations, right? If I, if I.
Well, they were, they were concerns. So I want to know how they address, are, how are they addressing my concerns?
Okay. So I mean, I don't think we got into addressing them item by item. I think that, you know, the commission acknowledged them and probably will have to deal with them, I guess, at the public hearing. So I can't exactly answer, answer that question. So, I mean, I could, I could take a look at it again and try to respond to it, but your, your original question, I think, was.
Well, the first one was about wells. The second one was about salt, and which I do have a response on that question.
Where the response is coming, not, not sorry to interrupt, but.
Um.
Where is that?
It was this year I had gone in, uh, asked what was happening with these questions. Andy had given me, uh, this document that talks about the, uh, section eight dash twenty-three Preparation Amendment or, or adoption of a Plan of Conservation and Development, and it talks about, you know, how, what the state requires, all of that. And then there was two pages, one that it started with number four, and then the next one said, action items.
Okay. So, so statutes of the statutes, I know those, and then the response, um, were sections of the draft that, that were provided to try to respond to your question. Is that?
I don't know what, I, I'm not sure. There was no explanation.
Okay. Let me just tell you a second. I think Andy wants to jump in. So, Andy wanted to, it looks like you want to add something?
Yeah, I could jump in there. So when Danny submitted those questions, he submitted them to me at the town manager's office. What I did was I shared those with the consultant, uh, saying that, uh, the select, we're going to have this on the agenda, and these were the concerns that were submitted. Danny's, uh, concerns were real ones that were submitted. And that was the response back from the consultant, um, especially on the salt. They explained that what there was being proposed in the new plan of conservation is actually practices that we're. Uh, implementing now. So it wasn't, um. He was looking for clarification from where Dan was coming from, saying, you know, these, if these are the practices that we're already performing. I'm not sure what the concern is. So it was a little bit of back and forth on that, but it was with Michael Leary.
Okay, um, and then I also had a section or a question on two G. It, uh. We, you know, we talked about clear cutting. Uh, and my comment there was good and responsible land stewardship involves at times clear cutting. Uh, and you talk to DEP forestry division, you know, these are, these are the experts in forestry management. Um, I just. Get. Nervous. That it seems as if they're just saying, let everything grow, don't cut anything. Um, and, you know, this is the, this is what I basically got out of that section of two G. Uh. You know. Conservation easements while necessary in some circumstances, I found them to be a bit heavy handed. Uh. And the discreet state, the street scapes lighting seems to be in direct conflict with the proposed ball. Field lighting proposals later for vets park. Uh, areas of historical heritage. I'm very concerned with how far do you go? Concerning limiting development on what may be considered historical. Uh. I'm just afraid that this section could very easily start a slippery slope by groups claiming past ownership. And or property details as being historical and as such lows to development. Uh, under that classification, in my estimation, there's no property in town. Or state for that matter, that that claim couldn't be raised. Uh. I personally feel that historical sites should basically be those where there are some sort of a standing structure.
Dan, am I right?
Yes, sir.
The slippery slope to talk about. I'm concerned with also, you know, with the last year and a half, I've brought it up more than once. What we're seeing here is a document reached by consensus. I guess quite a bit of the verbiage that you are bringing forward. Now the question I have for myself. Is it? A ball? Or is this consensus of a great deal of the people that participated and that was being formed? We have a feel for how a lot of people in this town feel. But clear cutting, in my opinion, is a usable tool under the right circumstances.
Yes.
But the key here is, is that if someone wanted to come and. I'm talking out my butt here, but I don't know exactly what I'm saying. I want to clear cut my land, which means I take down my apple. I'd need a permit. If I were to do some forestry.
I mean. There may be, I mean, in proximity to wetlands, yeah, maybe, uh, if it's going to result in erosion, yeah, probably, but there's fair amount of flexibility otherwise.
From a first, from a philosophical standpoint, our document. Says that we don't want to do this. From a legal standpoint, I would have the ability to. Uh. Put in a request that need me. By the law. Use the land for what I want to see fit. The P O C D is going to inform me of what my neighbors. The consensus of my neighbors is when it comes to clear cutting, but the P O C D will not stop. What would stop it or allowed to go forward is the planning zoning commission, the water, the hazard, it's the water.
Conservation commission?
Conservation commission. And ultimately. You think if you're over the next four, five, six, ten years. You, as you're setting forward. Our direction. It's like everything has come. Like this, and now this crunch point's all over. And this is one. But it is not law. Now, both that, if you endorse it. Which I, I can endorse as a thoughtful document, not one that I agree with a hundred percent, but. A definite document of people putting in their best foot. To bring our town forward. I can, I can go along with that as long as when questions and development come up. That document does not dictate. What needs to happen. These are rules and regulations and the people in this room.
Do you agree with that, Matt?
Yeah, I do. Um, and. Yeah. So I mean, each one of the items that you've raised, I think are, again, these are recommended policies. Not established, right? Unless they are by regulation. So for clear cutting, right? There's reasons why you don't clear cut. There are a balanced approach to forestry. Typically not clear cutting. A lot of times a selective thinning, it could be a very. Extreme thinning. Clear cutting. The connotation is that you're wiping vegetation that ultimately is susceptible to erosion, which you want to avoid. So I think if we look closer, and I'm not going to do this right now, and I certainly have a memorized plan. I don't expect anybody to. Um, is a recommendation that clear cutting is probably not a good forestry practice. But there are clear portion practices. So, um. It, you know, again, it's a balance and ultimately comes down to a decision. So. Is the, is the planet, planet conservation development a good? Guidance document? Yeah. But we're going to look at it case by case basis to say, is clear cutting appropriate here or not? I mean, if there's a proposal in front of us, we have to make a tough decision. I think the same thing applies to historic preservation. I told you before, I said it many times now, people have different interpretations of historic preservation.
Mm-hmm.
I'd call a gale house landing historic preservation. They took a building that was about to fall over.
Yeah.
And re, and reinvigorated it and have established a street scape. That makes you feel like we talked about, you're in a historic. New England town center. For me. That's a victory. That's, that's a great example of historic preservation. Now it is not. Um, the, the, um, the gold schoolhouse. Which is a replica, that is the, that is on point, the schoolhouse museum state. That's a different approach. Doesn't mean it's the wrong approach, it's just a different approach. So when we look at, you know, what we're going to be facing. Landways and archaeological sites. Yeah, we're gonna have to take tough decisions on each one of those. For me, when I think about those landways, I'm daydreaming about this a little bit lately. They can be great assets. To a, to a beautiful village style development. I think about like, if that's going to be. Uh, maybe like a, um, a resource, like a, a, a walking path or something like that, that could be lined with. Jerry trees and blossom right now. That could be a, that could be an attraction. That could be a regional attraction. That can be incorporated into whatever we decide to develop in the area. Might even make. What we do decide to develop in the area even more marketable. So, I mean, I think we have these opportunities. I think you talked about we're on, on the brink of opportunities. All these things come into play. I don't think the plan is saying that this is how it's going to happen. This is when it's going to happen and, um. And there's no other options. I think it just gives us some guidelines for, look, we want to preserve our water. There are a lot of elements that were, that are incorporated in how you do that effectively. Community wide, sure. Deicing, deicing. Is a big issue. We should continue to try to look for whatever the best approach to that is. It should be our job, it's our burden. Um, because we're drinking the water that, you know, so we'll continue to try to do that. Are we doing what we can right now? Probably. Doesn't mean that it's the only way we're going to do it. So again, the plan just is. You know, in some cases it's a baseline. Some cases it's an opportunity. Some cases it's, you know, let's continue to try.
Yeah, as I said, I read this and I'm saying it made, I, I would, I would be much. Happier to see something that this is just a guideline. You know, what, what he came up as a statement, if that gets read into the motion, I would be able to support it. But I just, I know that there are people that are going to take this plan and try to use it as a sledgehammer. Saying, well, your plan says and you are acting against it. I, I just. I'm so afraid of that.
I don't want to go there. But worst case scenario, I, I faced this before. It's like a chicken and egg thing, right? So for example, the, um. Xavier Brothers Land Swat. Hmm, that's a win-win. There's no question about that, right? Well, the P O C D. Doesn't show that portion of property that they want to develop the new warehouse on as commercial land. What does that mean? We got to change the P O C D to accommodate? What is a, what is a huge victory? I don't think that's appropriate. We can still make a decision that's not entirely consistent, close enough. It still covers a lot of bases that are already reflected in the P O C D, but you know, you're going to look at X's and O's. Or, or, you know, the, the finest detail you can pick out of it. Well then, you know, we have to make tough decisions.
I understand, but we have people that are constantly throwing up. You know, it says X, Y, Z, and you are blah, blah, blah. And that's the thing that scares me. I hate getting. Uh, documents that are so locked in. That you have to go through all kinds of explanation. And again, if there was something in the beginning that said, this is a plan, this is not. Uh. You know, um, like what, what you had and you're saying, I thought was very good.
Um, and, and we will incorporate that into our forward, make it clear. And, and the other conversation we got the other night, just to, just to follow up on that point. So we have policies. It might be perceived that a policy is something that towns established already, like the, the personal record policy. That is. That is, that is law. Right? What's in the plan is our recommended policies or policies to consider. Right? Not until they become established and voted on and adopted by the commission or by the board. Are they really law. So again, it's, it's us working in that direction. Um, another good, oh, the, the, um, Lily's comment about seventy-five versus fifty. Kind of wish we didn't say a number at all.
Yeah.
We want to reach, we want to strive for the best. But we did, you know, we, we want to also reach for. The best we can. So seventy-five is a stretch. I mean, there was a debate about it. Fifty or thirty-five, I'm saying. Doesn't matter. Let's just, let's just do what we can. Let's do the best we can. We know we have limitations anyways. So we'll reflect. What the community's goal is. Um, but if we don't get to seventy-five in five years, what happens then? Just have to continue to try. So. Um, I know I'm, I'm.
No, I just.
Preaching, but, uh.
I've just seen people, you know, get locked into, to things that they hadn't ever planned on getting locked into because of the way things get written.
And it's tough.
And I want to.
We don't always get to talk like kind of off the cuff, like maybe almost like this, but, um. You think about it like the town. It's no capacity. To combat everything that's on Facebook, like, you know, and, and once it's on there, it's like. Can't take it back. So. You know, things get off the rails. It happens. We'll, we'll continue to try to do our best and say the right thing and make. I still think like this commission is. Working really hard together. To, to, to find consensus and make tough decisions.
Let's hear a little bit from Keith.
Yeah.
They're a lot. Okay, they're nothing. Tell it to.
No, I'm, I'm not going to rehash some of the things that have already been said by my fellow selectmen and selectwomen. Um, you know, I, I agree with a lot of what Dana said, a lot. Of what Dana said I agree with. Um, I also would like to bring up, you know, the first part of that motion, I am very much in favor. I want to thank everybody for the time they devoted because I've been a volunteer in this town for eight years and I know that. You know, I would much rather be going to a softball game or spending time at home with my kid. But I try to give back to the community and I thank you all for your dedication to the community. However, unfortunately. The motion says endorse. And because of some of the things that, that my colleagues have pointed out. Because of my background in writing government reports and policies and statute. And memorandums that, that are with the full effect of law. I cannot endorse this. I just, I, I can't. Um, and, and I know I missed the cutoff for a response to my concerns. Um, but I did send to Andy, you know, just an example of some of them so that you understand where I'm coming from. I don't think we have to get into all of them right now. But, you know, some of the charts and graphs. The, the thing about this document is, is that. It's like a hundred and fifty pages. So people are not going to read every sentence. I didn't read every sentence the first time through. First time through, I hit the high points. I was like, okay, you know, I'm somewhat on board with this. But then when the word endorse comes up. I go back through with my hat on and say, okay, this is going to be an official plan, put on the town website. And it is going to be our outward facing document to the public. And you have a chart that manipulates data. You have graphs that specifically bypass wetlands. For corridors, and I don't know why. These are concerns I have. Additionally. When you're talking government documents like this that are updated every X amount of years. The purpose of that document is not to establish a plan. A plan was established thirty years ago. The, the, the purpose of this document is to update the plan to current standards and concerns. Not once in this document that I see e-bikes. Brought up. I mean, that's a major concern to me, having almost been run over by somebody doing forty miles an hour on the airline trail. So, you know. I don't think that this plan, I think that it has gone back and it has rehashed a previous document. And yes, it has made some. Alterations here and there to public concerns. This is not something that I can endorse going on the website as a selectman in this town. I apologize. But I do want to thank you all for your effort.
Okay. So thank you for that. And, um, and I haven't made any comments, so, but I again, what we asked, but I appreciate that. And I, I guess, um. This is an observation, not so much on the content, but the way it's presented to me, I struggle with a little bit. Um, again, I, like everyone's saying, a lot of work went in and I appreciate all the work that went in. And there's obviously a lot of folks with a lot more knowledge than me, so. Uh, I appreciate that very much. But to me, as a resident, I'm interested in. Uh, prioritization, timing, ownership, funding. Uh, I, I stopped counting after fifty action items. As I, I'm like, oh, you can't manage fifty, fifty action items. So if everything's important, nothing's important. And so to me as a resident, I'm like, well, this is overwhelming. And I don't really understand what's most important. I, I see a lot of it, good information. Um, but like from a corporate perspective, which is my background, I would appreciate like an executive summary of all this hundred and fifty plus pages. These are the things that we think as a town, we should be focusing our, our energies on that we see as a priority. Um, and providing more information about how you can actually sort of absorb the information as a layperson or as a town resident, because he's right. The town, the average town resident isn't going to be able to file the documents for him. So he can't file. And so how do we get the public to be comfortable with it in a way that's manageable? Uh, actionable and, and clear with prioritization. And so I struggled a little bit with that. Um, but again, I, I, if that's not the intent. Then I, I, I just, it's an observation, um, that, that I make as someone who actually, um, like all of us went through it. Uh, I couldn't read every word. I, 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 I read every page, but I couldn't read every word because it. It became almost too much, um, to really start to understand what our priorities were. Um, because everything, every, all those action items can't all have the same degree of prioritization or, or, uh. It can't be all the same level of importance. So help me understand what we should be focusing on. So I sort of viewed it as a, a lot of really good information with not a lot of great deal of focus. And it's, it, from an entirety perspective, and I look at it from the entirety, um, clearly it's focused on each of the items, but. Um, to me it was, um, it was difficult to really get comfortable with it, um. As someone who wasn't directly involved in the creation of it. Um, so it's just an, an observation. Um, uh, but again, I, I respect and appreciate, um, all the efforts. I understand that we need to move forward and we need to have a guiding document. I understand it's, I appreciate the Terry's words and Dan. Talking about how do we make sure that the public understands that this is advisory and that the public has clear understanding that, um, it will not be difficult to. Um, provide feedback and add and get an audience. Because once a document is proved sort of, it's, it, it might be more difficult for us to bring. Um, changes. And, and so how do we do that? How do we make sure that audience is still open and receptive to feedback as we, uh, as the document evolves? So. Um, those are just, just observations that I have. So, uh, any additional comment?
I guess, I guess the only question I would have. Um. Is anyone willing to consider friendly amendment that we would endorse this plan if and only if there was, as Dan requested, a preamble that stated very clearly?
Well, that's why I'd like to hear his. Verbiage again. Uh, to see if that could be added to.
I'm just wondering if that's, um, because I appreciate where everybody's coming from and, you know, I have to echo Keith. I have a lot of concerns with some of the information in this. You know, I have to echo Keith. I have a lot of concerns with some of the information in this number, particularly when it comes to. How much of our land we're tying up in open space, which I see as a significant concern. I think. Tying up forty percent of our land is unacceptable for the future generations and for where we see this town going. But if we could maybe come to a friendly amendment where we can get a majority of the board to at least move this forward with that. I mean, I would be willing to put it forward as a friendly amendment if we felt that it would go anywhere.
Go ahead, Keith.
Um, you. I'm, I'm actually open to friendly amendments. The only thing is, is that I. I can't keep that word endorsing there. You know, words have meaning.
Yeah.
And I. I will never vote yes to endorse this. I can vote yes to move this to referendum or, you know. Thank everybody. Or move it forward for whatever reason, but I. I cannot endorse this as written, even with the preamble, because. I I I can't have graphs that go back and forth between. Data groupings to skew how the graph looks. That's that's deliberate manipulation of data. I don't understand, and and I get that it's a work in progress, but I don't understand how they make the lines on some of these greenways. When the wetlands are right here, but they draw the line just short of them. If if this is truly a plan of conservation, why would your line, because again, the line is your goal. It's your, it's your best foot forward. Why would it not incorporate the wetlands? Why would the wetlands be just outside the greenway? So now, you know, I. I have a lot of questions, but well, ton of questions. I mean, you know, I really feel. To to steal your your metaphor, I apologize, Terry, but it's a great one. You're stumbling and you see it coming. And you hope that there's something you can do to catch yourself. But we have an outbound sewer line. And we have a ton of wells in town.
Mm-hmm.
And we have people that are having to drill their wells deeper. As someone whose first house had well problems. And I got a crash course in the difference between groundwater and aquifer, like. These are questions that I had that I really wish were addressed. Without us just thinking that, you know what, it's all right, working now, it'll work for the next fifty years. We can't continue to pump water out to the river. Unless it's exclusively groundwater that's being replenished. Right away. And I can guarantee you not all of those, you know, wells in that area are groundwater. I'm sure some of them are aquifer. You know, uh, I.
I'm just trying to see if we can, I appreciate.
I I I know, but I mean, you know, the clear cutting thing, I.
Yeah.
I'm a hundred percent on board with the clear cutting thing. I mean. We don't, we don't want to talk about it, but you know, just like out west. You have to burn it. You have to. That's nature's way of doing it.
Yeah.
You know, we don't burn here. We don't burn. So what's nature's way? There isn't one anymore. It's just our way. So we're not burning it. So, yes, selective clear cutting. Deney, whatever you want to say, for us to say that our goal is to not. You know, occasionally just wipe the slate and let nature come back. Is just as blind as those same policies out west. I I can't, I I'm open to friendly amendments, but it should not includes the include the word endorse. I cannot vote.
Actually, I made two points here. So I just want to be us to be very careful that we are not making per, we are making perfect the enemy of the good here. We can go into this document page by page and we can say, well, I don't like this word and, you know, this chart is manipulated, whatever it may be. We, but we need to make sure that we are, we are fully supportive of the town take, taking the advantage of the opportunity of the moment. I was sitting in the, in the event um, the other day, the the housing commissioner and the commissioner of economic development. We are on the radar, we're on the map for the state right now, and we need to make sure that we're still in front of them. Looking for future opportunities for grants, et cetera. It's gonna. Match exactly to whatever projects we have here. We need to make sure we maintain. Our darling status, if you will, with the state. So. Um, and then the second thing is as far as the friendly amendment and taking out the word endorse, that's fine. But I think we we need to make sure that we keep our eyes on the prize here. Um, and and I would, I'm okay with endorsed. Keith is not. Let's change the words, but let's get going because this happens historically all the time in this town where. Perfect is the enemy of good. And then what happens? Nothing ever gets done. Um, and we need to move beyond that.
Okay, so uh. You've risen, so you wanted to add something.
And so I I'm not going to be able to remotely address. Lot of, lot of the concerns with the detail of the plan, um, but uh. I think I'd like to grab Dan's uh. For sure, persons, uh.
Dan, fine.
Um, chief uh, statutes, because I think what the statutes request is the legislative body. Uh. Endorse the plan.
Yeah, it's free. Some of his state requirement.
Legislative body of the. That's the case may be, may hold one more public hearings and show.
That's exactly right.
Alright, so what you don't think? I don't think that, you know, a friendly amendment doesn't really get us anywhere.
No, so, okay, so.
Well, but it would get us somewhere in terms of that we endorse this plan so long as that preamble was in there. Explicitly stating this is not binding. That was going to be my friendly.
Okay, so let's do a little quick poll here. So we understand. Mr. Pedd, where you stand, um, with that advisory language. That Tiffany's suggesting.
Yeah.
Would you support moving forward with, uh, absolutely endorse has to stay in there, so we don't understand what Keith stands, would you?
Endorse has to be in there or could be support?
Uh, has to be legally.
Endorse based on the statute.
It has to be legally endorsed.
That's.
Well, then it would be endorse the intent.
Draft, it's called the draft in the.
I, I want intent. I I I. I don't, this is, I don't endorse the draft. I endorse the intent of the draft. And, you know, I like what he had. I can't remember it, but.
Okay, so Dan is suggesting that we endorse the intent of the draft and then that the language.
It is important to note that the P O C D is not a regulation or a mandate, but it is an important advisory document.
Okay, so would you be comfortable that that friendly amendment be at the beginning of the motion as an introductory? Item as a clarification and then the balance of the motion. Reread with the change to endorse the intent of the draft, what Mr. Larson is suggesting?
Yes.
Okay.
I would be willing to support that and make that friendly.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair.
Let's, yes, sir. Mr. Tim, go right in.
I I don't mean to interrupt it. I'm not here to talk about anybody's comments. I think they're all great comments. But Matt was right, and and the um, statute clearly says as the the Board of Selectment's governing body to either endorse. So I don't know if you can amend that endorse or not. That would something I'd have to ask the attorney. I'm not sure by. Changing the language you're you're proposing, if that would still get it done is is my concern. I I maybe Matt.
Your concern is specific to the word intent. Is that specific to Dan's suggestion of the intent, the word intent of the draft?
Yeah, I I'd have to check with legal, and I don't know if Matt wants to weigh in on that, but I, the statute's pretty clear that as the governing body, which you people are. He would endorse this plan. And I think you can do anything what you want with. Anything but, except to try to manipulate that word endorse. I'm not sure that would get it done.
Well, we're gonna leave the suggestion is the the word endorse remains, Andy. Uh, but he's he's suggesting adding, instead of endorse the draft, he's adding endorse the intent of the draft. He wants the word intent after endorse. So the word endorse would remain in the motion.
I get that. I'm just not sure that gets it done is my concern, but.
Okay, that's still an issue. Okay. And, alright, so. We would have to. Um. And we don't, we meet one more time. Is that, is that too late? Uh, if you get the opinion of Ken.
Matt, what do you think about that? I'll defer to Matt.
Did he not have a sixteen?
Yes.
So, are we using the twenty, on the twenty-eighth?
Right.
We can keep the public hearing open if it's necessary to give the commission more, or the board more time. Um.
Well, it would just be getting clarification on and.
But but.
The blank.
So I understand, I understand the intent of the friendly amendment and certainly will be. Uh, will, we, the the commission, I already know, wants to be deliberate about. The intent of the, the comment uh, that it's not a regulation, that portion of that, that's going to be incorporated. Um, but I don't know if if. I I guess this is maybe just a personal opinion, but. I guess why we dancing around like endorse the intent, I don't, what does that say? What does that really say?
It's important.
Endorse.
It's important.
Is that enough, though? I mean, if you don't, then you don't. But. Alright, sure.
Okay. There's a process here and part of the process is happening right in front of. Me right now. Five Board of Selectmen discussing the future of this town. There's processes that we go forward from there where this will go to the commission. I have no problem. Uh. Endorse the intent. And if that is legally not binding, but it is what this board wants. You send that back to the commissioners and they decide what they need to do at that point in time. I think it's really important, because Dan, what you're saying is a hundred, I agree a hundred percent, the intention of this document is to tell us into the future, right? Are we. Confident in doing this sometimes? Sometimes there are lots of times when we give a minute, give it input, it's really hard. And intent is there. And I can tell from everyone in front of me right now, your intent is to tell this down forward. I would recommend, because. That you can help me and Andy on this. The commission, if the lawyer says that your amendment is. Basically no endorsement at all, but then it's up to the commission to take it to the next step. But what you will be saying to the community. Is that you endorse the intent of the draft. And that's what the community. Unity needs your leadership to help us go forward as confidently and stumbling as we are, but we're moving forward. If we delay it. The perfect, we'll never get to the perfect, but the good could very well be delayed, because there's other things that are going to be in front of us in the next few weeks.
Yeah, I mean, the stumbling's gonna happen.
I think if we push it back forward, it's just gonna get harder for this. So if you understand what I'm saying, I'm okay with your intent.
But Andy, what Andy's saying is we don't, we don't know that. We can make that modification without jeopardizing the intent of what we're supposed to accomplish.
Uh, so the lawyer will probably give you some feedback on it. But the thing is, is that you will say exactly what you need to say. If the lawyers don't agree with it, you still say, like, you say, you tell the community. And then the commission has the ability to take that forward and still put this to referendum.
Okay, so in summary, I, in an ideal situation, I would want, you know, the each board member's. Concerns to be adequately addressed and before we make a final vote. And so my question is, it. Again, if we get that clarification. By voting then. In the next meeting prior to the public hearing, does that jeopardize anything at all with this process?
Between now and the next two weeks.
Correct. That's my question.
The next two, the next two weeks, what would it take you then?
The sixteen.
The sixteen.
And no?
Okay, so that answers no. I suggest we table it to get uh, legal opinion. So, because I I I would appreciate, you know. I mean, Dan, that's a concern, and if we can address it, then let's address it. And then at that point, my feelings will have in the votes.
I did the wrong math.
Okay.
Public hearings in the fourteenth. So we, again, like I said before, we can keep it open. I mean, might offer that. This is the way the commission feels. You can move forward with this action now. Great. We'll get some question on it from the. Town attorney, and if it's inadequate, then we do it again. But if it's adequate, you'll have covered the base.
Not the worst idea.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying is if we. If we make our motion the way we are are happy with it being or sad. Say you're happy. Then we get, then we get clarification.
Back and it's jeopardizing, then we better make that decision.
Okay, yeah, so we're gonna move forward on that basis. Uh, Tiffany, if you. Yeah, I'll help, we'll help. But let's try to get some clarity here. We'll vote on the motion. Uh, as amended, we'll get clarification if that's acceptable. Uh, and if it isn't, we'll, we'll address it. Uh, and if not, we've moved forward.
I'd like to add a friendly amendment to the proposed motion. Um, to read exactly the same, except as follows. And in accordance with section eight dash twenty-three of the Connecticut general statutes. Hereby endorse the intent of the draft twenty twenty-four plan of conservation and development. With the stipulation. That a preamble is put in the beginning of the document that notes. It is important to note that the P O C D is not a regulation or a mandate, but it is an important advisory document.
You good over there, young lady?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, uh, so motion has been read, motion uh, has been uh, revised. Um, I will uh, move forward, call the question at this juncture and move to a vote. All those in favor. Um, agreeing or all those favor of the motion with the amendments as read by Ms. Tealy. Please uh, uh, no, by voting, uh, I'm sorry, I, if you're in favor, excuse me, nay, if you're opposed, or if you wish to abstain. Keith.
Keith Pedd, no.
Hey, Mr. Slux.
Because I was the one that pushed for the addition. I will reluctantly go aye.
Aye, thank you.
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Thank you, Claudia.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Peter Casper, aye. Motion passes four to one as amended. Thank you for all your, your comments. Thank you very much, Terry, for your comments. Uh, it was obviously a long session, but very important. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Can I just finish one comment if you don't mind?
Oh, go right, Ed, yeah.
Maybe. So you're right, the the comment about prioritization, what are, what are truly the the near term goals? Um, there's a lot there, and it's a ten year plan, but we have these right now.
Mm-hmm.
We should be talking about priorities.
Yeah.
Should, you know, and and it's not that easy to do. At a meeting like this. Big film, you know, I'm not the greatest, you know, sneaker.
Yeah, you're all right. It'll be pretty good.
So, so maybe there's an opportunity. We should start talking about doing that.
Yeah.
And getting some good public input, because that's, there's so many things listed. I think we probably benefited from hearing from the public on what they think is most important.
Mm-hmm.
To provide some guidance. So thank you for that suggestion.
Uh, if I may also add, I have been requesting for literally months. Potentially years. Knowing that this plan was being worked on. To have updates to this board. Done and given, and there was not one update as to what was going on.
Directed to the board.
Directed to the board.
So we were expected to go to the website or something like that, or?
I don't know what was expected, but I had requested. Input because I know that other different commissions were were uh, tasked with giving input. And my question was continuously, how come the Board of Selectmen is not being updated? And um, I also. Find it. As an issue that. All the boards and commissions really need to be working together, and I feel we've been in a vacuum for this whole process.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Obviously, a lot there and more to follow. So thank you all, and thank you to the board for all your thoughtful comments and preparation. So that moves us to uh, seven D, which is simply a note, no action needed on the uh, on the budget. Uh, I'll start, Mr. Tierney, uh, moving along at seven E. Any o- other old business you wish to bring before the board that hasn't been already addressed?
No, sir, Mr. Sherman.
Any board member? Okay, thank you so much. Uh, alright, Mr. Tierney, if we can move to eight A, new business?
Thank you. Eight A has set a public hearing date for the proposed Savvy Brothers LLC. Um, at the April eighteenth, two thousand and right, Board of Selectmen's meeting, the board approved moving forward with the proposed Savvy Brothers LLC. And a town of Hebron land swap for properties located on Church Street. At this time, a public hearing should be scheduled as part of the approval process. The suggested date for the public hearing is Thursday, June sixth. Two thousand and twenty-four at six forty-five P M. Immediately preceding the regular Board of Selectment meeting. Then there's a proposed motion to be read.
Thank you. Mr. Larson, would you be so kind?
Uh, sure. Move that in accordance with the Connecticut general statutes, the Hebron Board of Selectmen schedule a public hearing for Thursday, June sixth. Two thousand and twenty-four at six forty-five P M. To receive public comment on the proposed Savvy Brothers LLC and Town of Hebron land swap. For properties located.
For properties located on Church Street. The meeting will be held both virtually and in person. At the Hebron Town Office Building, fifteen Yoliet Street, Hebron, Connecticut.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Uh, we have covered this extensively in the past and thank you again. Second, Keith, thank you. All right. Um, and so appreciate the creativity and all, but I will move the question, uh, to board's so, so inclined. Um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay, or if you wish to abstain, please note that as well. Keith?
You bet. I.
Thank you, Dan.
Uh, Dan Larson, I.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Tiffany Teely, I.
Thank you, Claudia.
Claudia Riley, I.
And computer capital, I, and motion passage unanimously. Thank you so much. Okay. Mr. Tierney, that moves us to eight C.
Yes, item A B was stricken, so we go to item A C, uh, selectmen's authority, uh, selectment, uh, Pettit asked of this be added to the agenda.
Um, I wanted to bring this before the board because I know that, um, several years ago. Several years ago, um, the town attorney had given a. Instructional meeting regarding. You know, new board member conduct, uh, authority board members, F O Y, other such subjects. Um, I, I've noticed in some of our, you know, communications. Between selectmen and, and between the town manager and everything that. I think that some of those. Lessons from that instruction are things that people that are, are new to. Um, you know, board service may not be aware of. There's a lot of technicalities, a lot of little things that, um, we have to be cognizant of. And so I know in that previous one. I know Donna's going to correct me. I think it was eight years ago. We had it for all the boards.
We haven't had in all boards meeting, and this is it, not just the three boards, but all boards. We used to do it every two years in January after new boards were. Elected and appointed. Um, we would do it every two years and we would bring in the town attorney or town head from F O Y. And we would do a round table, have all the boards and commissions give updates, exchange information, talk about goals. And then they would, um, the professionals would give. F O Y for board and commission responsibilities, roles and responsibilities. I think the last one was in twenty eighteen. Um, and then of course we then hope it, so we haven't had one in a while.
Initiative.
I think it was twenty eighteen. I.
No, I, I think you're probably. Yes, um, no, I, I trust Donna's memory much better than my own. Um, but I, yeah, I would, I would hopefully like the selectmen to come to a consensus so that Peter can. Um, ask Andy to move forward with some initiative towards that happening.
That'd be great. Great.
Okay. By now, I would ask that if you could, Andy, if you could research out of Donna to see what would be involved with, uh, bringing that back, uh, onto our collective's calendars. I think all of us can benefit, uh, either as a refresher or as new information. And also we have a lot of new board members across the continuum of boards and commissions. So certainly I think a lot would hopefully benefit. So Keith, thank you so much for bringing that up and. And reminding all of us that this is the unique role in which we serve and there are unique rules, guidelines and procedures that, um, may not be intuitive, but nonetheless need to be followed.
Yeah, I, 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 I mean, you know, Robert's rules is, is by no means easy. That's why they make an abridged version. And, and you know, every board is slightly different. Um, you know, things that were commonplace on other boards that I've served do not apply here. Um, and, and vice versa. So I think it's a great opportunity for everyone to kind of. Learn, you know, the ins and outs, the dos and don'ts, so that we can conduct ourselves in a, a professional and appropriate manner, um, in our current positions.
It's, it's a thoughtful idea and, and, and we can always improve. And just the other day, I actually was looking up something in Robert's rules. And I've been serving for quite a long time now. Yeah. So because, you know, it definitely is something, um, that I remember going to that session back in twenty eighteen and, and. Coming away with a few, uh, eye opening notes that, um, I just, that wasn't thinking about. So especially with F O Y and other items. So. Good suggestion. Let's move forward with determining how we can do that for the benefit of all that are serving.
Mr. Sherman.
Oh, yes, sir.
Can I just ask a question for clarity? So in the, in the packet, it said for the selectmen. So are you suggesting we do it for all the boards and commissions? Cause that, that might take some more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Finish your thought. I interrupted. I apologize.
That would take a lot more organization and possibly push it out. I, I, I just want to make sure my direction is clear. However, you. Your intent, I just want to make sure I'm clear on what I do.
I, I, I mean, I would defer to the other select. Selectmen, select, select women, um, as to their preference, but I think that the value, you, you know, I, I don't want to waste town funds and have multiple. Times, but I think the value to all boards, um, would be substantial, especially, you know, for, for new members. So. Yes, I, I think that sacrificing some time to organize it is, is well worth the benefit that those board members will receive.
Okay, so let's, Andy, go down.
I, I think we can do both. I think it's not a heavy lift. I think Ken could show up at a meeting and do it with the board of selectmen. If that was the original intent, the only reason I'm even suggesting too, is it's going to take a lot more organization, especially going into the summer months. To try to get all the other people together. So I'll go either way, whatever the recommendation is from the board.
I, I think I like Keith's recommendation that it should be all the boards at one event. Um, because that also gives us an opportunity to interface with other boards. And to your point earlier, Dan, I mean, that gives us an opportunity to talk with some people on some boards that we don't ordinarily speak to. Like planning and zoning. So I, I see. I see no reason why we would pay the town attorney to come in twice. I mean, I think it needs to be one event, all boards. People who can come will come and people who can't can, but the goal would be we could have representation of one or two people from each board. I would consider that a success.
Yes, I, I agree. And honestly, with, you know, the new hybrid format and the ability to, you know, record the session for those who are unable to attend. I, at least the resources still there available for them. Um, but, but I agree. I would like. I, I think having as many people in, in person as possible to be able to get that cross committee, cross board collaboration. You know, I, I think it would be beneficial.
Okay, so the board consensus is that we move with the, the broader, full audience. So please keep, just keep us posted on that.
Yeah, no, that's clear. That's not what the item was recalling for. So that's why I want a clarification. Thank you.
Yep, no, it was not, but I think that it was a good discussion and a good outcome. So.
Between Zoom recording and everything, there's no reason why people, even if they can't attend in person, there are other avenues at that point. So.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, that moves us to eight D, the draft, uh, agenda for May sixteenth. So as always, uh, please bring in, uh, items forward. Uh, to the, um, to the town manager's office, uh, or obviously, uh, you're welcome to discuss them with me. If we're not clear about them, feel free to do that. Um, and I will tell you, the in-person opportunity, the Girl Scouts are, are coming in to, under good to know. These young, uh, these young ladies are, uh, I've been told they're very excited to come before us in person at the town. They're very excited to go to the town hall, I heard. So. Um, that will, uh, also bring a smile to my face, uh, listening to, uh, to those young ladies talk about, um, some of the things that they're doing under good to know. So just to know with that. Uh, any other new business that should come before the board or the selectmen members, any of the new business?
Yes, we need to bring cash to that meeting for cookies.
I think cookie season is over. I used to work for them. I think we must stop.
They might be selling something though. We'll, we'll, we'll have to see. We'll have to see. Uh, Mr. Tierney, anything else for you that you wish to bring before the board on the new business that isn't already been, hasn't already been addressed?
No, sir, Mr. Sherman.
Thank you. So item nine is the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature. Mister Board may not need to discuss individually and may be voted on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section. And request the chair to remove it for later discussion and a separate vote if necessary. We have two under the section, the approval of the minutes. Which is the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting, as well as the tax refund, the details in your packet. Is there anybody that wished to remove anything from the consent agenda? No. Okay, so move forward with the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay, or please note if you wish to abstain. Keith?
You bet. I.
Thank you, Dan.
Dale Larson, I.
Tiffany. Tiffany Teely, I.
Claudia.
Claudia Riley, I.
Claudia, Peter Casper, I. The motion, uh, passes unanimously. Move to liaisons, uh, which is ten on the agenda. I do not have an update. I will turn to Tiffany for, uh, even board event.
A whole quick thanks. I know the hour's upon us. Um, but there was a wonderful event last weekend, um, Hebrew Jesus Love at Phillyad. It was amazing. It was truly wonderful to see so many families participate in that, in that event. Um, so kudos to Dr. Baird and Chairwoman Heather Pettit and her, and her team and her board for pulling that together. Um, I also want to share that teacher appreciation is coming up and, um. One way they're going to appreciate teachers and our wonderful staff next week is that the board is going to serve them breakfast. So that's a nice way to say thank you. So, and that's what I have.
Very nice. Thank you. That, Mr. Larson, board of finance?
Uh, I don't have anything from the board of finance. You know, uh, I will state, uh, went to the Juneteenth. Organizational meeting the other day at Peter's house and they're working on, again, quite a program and hopefully it doesn't get rained out this year. Yeah, but they do have a, uh, secondary location, the event of brain, which is made it, uh, elementary school. So. What's it for that?
Okay, thank you. Keith, land acquisition.
Did not meet.
Thank you. Claudia, ram board event.
So quick, uh, updates. Uh, the superintendent is presenting at the Marver Board of Selectmen meeting on the budget on Monday, following. Uh, regular round budget meeting. They're going to be commencing the annual performance review of the superintendent. And lastly, good news, the superintendent met with the other town superintendents and they agreed to have a senior walk. Kids will go in their caps and gowns and march in the, um, elementary schools. The little ones. It's very, I've seen it online. It's very, very cute. Yeah, like the little ones will get a kick out of it. So that's what, um, our seniors are going to do.
Thank you for that update. Uh, that moves us to section eleven, which is public comment. Uh, do we have anybody online that wishes to comment?
There is nothing online.
There you go. We have, uh, Terry, would you like to comment?
I just want to say that this board is awesome.
Thank you.
Discussion. I appreciate your opportunity.
Thank you. And thank you for coming and, and for your volunteer work. So we appreciate it. Thank you. Hey, uh, no additional comment, other comment? Okay.
Move to adjourn board of selectmen's meeting at nine oh two P M.
I will second nine oh two, uh, Ken, thank you so much. Thank you for staying late. Very good discussion. Ten preparation. Good night.